Morning. It's 8:30, and I'm going to call the Clay County Board of Commissioners meeting for August 13, 2024, to order. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion, second, any discussion? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next is citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens present who want to address the commission on a topic that's not listed on the agenda? Steve, we got anybody online?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Next, approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Next, approval of minutes from the August 6, 2024, meeting.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented in the packet.
A motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right. Let's start off budget presentation from Fargo-Moorhead-West Fargo Chamber and Greater Fargo-Moorhead-EDC. Yep.
You can grab more chairs.
Just pull an extra chair and...
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks so much for putting us on your agenda, really appreciate it. I think, as most of you know, I'm Tammy Norgard with Bogal Law Firm. I also serve as the Chair of the Chamber Board this year, so it's been a great year, coming to the end of my year. I've also been a member of the EDC and have worked with the EDC on some client concerns, including some clients located in Clay County. So, I've been a part of that process and seen a lot of benefit to Clay County, just from a legal standpoint, too, helping some of my clients. It's been a pretty impactful year. Early on, Cass County decided that it wanted to look at encouraging the EDC and the Chamber to work together, to see what we could do to optimize some public funding, putting up maybe a job development authority, and really trying to tackle the workforce issue that we're struggling with here in this general region. As part of that challenge, the EDC and the Chamber got together and developed a comprehensive plan. I think that we are working together very collaboratively. We are trying to get a lot of private investment to match the public investment and really make our dollars go a lot further and have more of an impact. And it's, I'm really excited to see how well everybody's working together and just to see what kind of results we're going to end up coming out of this. So excited to be here with the team today with the presentation to you. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Jim, and you also are going to be hearing the, most of the presentation from Joe and Shannon.
Thanks, Tammy. Good morning. My name is Jim Boos, currently the Board Chair of Greater Fargo-Moorhead Economic Development Corporation and longtime Board Member. I'm with JBC Commercial Real Estate, doing commercial real estate transactions throughout the region, and some of you may recall when I helped facilitate the Saltmorehead Office Building that you acquired about three or four years ago, that was me, so you're welcome. That was a good acquisition for you all and a nice sales commission. Appreciate it. So, but yeah, I wanted to echo Tammy's thoughts as well, thank this board and the county for its longtime support financially and volunteer-wise. David, Kevin, been involved in, on the board over the years and the financial support, and we're excited to tell our story. I'll turn it over to Joe, he's going to give a little bit of an update, and then we'll get into the Innovate 28 presentation.
Yeah, so we can drive.
Yeah, and I think, did you want to start this out?
Sure, whatever you want.
Ladies first.
Okay. Well, good morning, Commissioners. It's great to be in front of you today. As you all know, Shannon Full, President of Fargo-Moorhead-West Fargo Chamber. We are really excited to bring to you a new plan, a new initiative, and really a signifying demonstration of collaboration at its best. So, Innovate 28, as Tammy mentioned, is a four-year collaborative plan between our two organizations, really looking at best practices around the country, but also hearing from our business leaders, our community leaders, and our elected officials, that we really need to come together to really leverage our resources and our relationships to the greatest extent for growth and prosperity. So, as we look at the, this is just a list of all of the board members from the two organizations, many of you familiar names to many of you, and it is public and private sector that you see that are making up this collaboration. The focus of Innovate 28 is really on three major areas. These are the areas that through all of our research, we also hired a outside fund development firm that came in and did over 70 different one-on-one interviews to identify what the priorities should be within the plan. They are no, probably no surprise to any of you, because they're things that we've been in front of you talking about for quite some time. So, the first is the talent and workforce component of that, growing the regional labor force. The second is around business expansion and the continued support for existing companies to expand and to grow. And then the third is all around public policy alignment, so not just public policy efforts that we're very involved in, but also, as we get into this a little bit more, cultivating candidates to increase civic engagement and keep us at the forefront. So, I'll jump in a little bit to talent and workforce. This is an area that we've talked a lot about and very much appreciate the past support of Clay County in our workforce initiatives. We've got significant amounts of efforts now focused on attracting talent to the region, also acclimating the talent, making sure that they, there is the stickiness in the social network that allows them to stay here, and then making sure we can help companies retain and develop their talent so that we can continue to have a pipeline that is strong that can suit the needs of our businesses. This also includes work with our K-12 districts. We have a very strong collaboration with the Moorhead District here, a lot more happening now with DGF, and obviously, the, on the other side of the river as well, and then also the five colleges that are in our region. So, the goal with the talent and workforce work that we're doing is to create a systems approach to address the greatest talent needs. The biggest challenge that we hear around talent and workforce now is that we are a region that is very program-rich and systems-poor. We have a lot of programs that a lot of nonprofits, higher education, K-12 businesses are working on, but they're not very connected. And so, our goal through this plan is to really continue to connect all of that work and allow us to focus on the greatest needs and really have more students stay here in the region, attract more people into the region to fill our high-demand jobs, which then also allows for the business growth to continue to happen in our region. When we think about, the second piece is all around public policy, another piece that you, as Commissioners, have been very supportive of the work that we've been doing in public policy. We will continue that commitment to that work and even elevate that. Some of the areas that we're really working on for public policy, particular to Minnesota, are things like, what are we doing now? We just had a meeting just this last week. Commissioner Mojo was in attendance with that. Fifty-four business and community leaders came together to learn more about the updates that we're having out of this last legislative session in St. Paul, but also things like, how are we now going to implement the paid family leave, which is a really big concern to our businesses? What is that going to do? What does that mean? We know that we fought a hard fight trying to not have that passed, but now that it has passed, it's all about, how do we help to influence the rulemaking, to make it as easy as possible for those companies to, and not just companies, organizations like the county, to comply with that. So, that's an area that we're seeing a lot of traction. We have, there's a strong desire for us to move out to the rural parts of Clay County as well and hold some of those meetings with businesses in the rural communities, so we're very committed to that as well. So, those are some of the areas. So, obviously, we have a very strong commitment to the statewide legislative agendas and having you and your input help us to influence that agenda. What's the most important pieces for Clay County? How do we make sure that we can come together and have a consolidated approach for our legislative priorities? So, those are some of the things that we're excited to work with you on. The other side of it, obviously, is the federal level, so what's happening at the federal level that we're needing for commitments from our legislators and our congressional delegates? That's another focus of ours. As you know, we do a DC fly-in. We also have our Business Day at the Capitol that many of you have attended with us down in St. Paul. Last session, we had 31 business and community leaders join us in St. Paul. It is still talked about, as far as we were one of the largest contingencies and very influential in that area, so those are some other pieces. The final part about public policy that I'm really excited to talk about is the focus on civic engagement. This is where Innovate 28 is going to give us the necessary resources to really elevate our work around civic engagement. So, this means everything from, how do we help people understand the importance of getting out to vote? And what does it mean? How do you understand your ballot? Why that's the most important? But the other side of it is having the conversations with individuals, but then also creating a toolkit for business leaders to have conversations with their employees about the importance for running for office, whether that be the local park board, whether it's a county, a county board, or it's all the way up here to the commission level, to the state levels. We know that we're seeing a pretty solid decline in civic engagement across the country, and so this toolkit we're trying, we know that the companies, CEOs are very influential with their employees, so making it easier for companies to have a conversation around the importance of this is, will be really critical. Not telling employees how to vote, but rather, what does it mean to support candidates? We also are having those conversations with companies about, what could that look like if I have an employee that's a county commissioner? What are the pros and cons to that? How do I support them in their endeavors? Same way with the state positions, this is very difficult because it's a much larger commitment, so how do we support that going forward? So, we're really excited to stand up this Center for Civic Engagement. We are also excited for the fact that we've got numerous educators that are wanting us to bring business leaders and elected officials into the classroom to also shape the future, our future minds around the importance of civic engagement. So, lots around public policy that we're excited about, lots of opportunities to engage, but the Center for Civic Engagement is something that we have heard from the public sector and the private sector that is really, really needed. The other part of this will be how we bring a cohesive ask to some of the things that we're doing, whether they be individual cities, to the county, to the business leaders, and we see this very successfully happening with those roundtables that are now very well-attended here on the Clay County side.
My turn?
Your turn.
Morning, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to present to you and have a conversation about Innovate 28. I'm going to spend just a few minutes highlighting, within the plan, the business development focus that we have, which obviously is going to align with the public policy work that the Chamber's doing, and obviously workforce development and all the components of that, whether it's recruitment, retention, attraction, acclimation, development. But specific to business development, when we looked at the last five years and going back at the successes that we've had as a region, I've had the opportunity to obviously present in front of you and share some of the impacts of that work, in addition to the broad economic impacts that we see as a region over, we can go back probably 30 or 40 years. And so, all of that's being considered when we look at the goals for this new four-year plan. The focus probably isn't going to be a surprise to any of you, most of the growth of this economy and most economies around the world happen because your existing companies look to grow those primary-sector businesses. We want to stay very focused, dive even deeper into the conversation with those companies. Just in the last year, we've had strategic conversations with about 15 companies from Clay County, over 125 across the region, asking them about their opportunity for expansion, their challenges, and working with them, with you at the county, city, utilities, all the partners that go into that decision-making. Happy to say that about 68% of the companies that we've interviewed in the last year want to expand in this region, but we have to overcome certain obstacles, workforce development probably being the biggest one and probably the reason, more than anything, why we've joined arms to help make that a possibility. So, we need to go deeper and faster in serving those existing companies in the marketplace. There are about 400 clients that we serve across the region, and obviously, helping them, no matter where they're located in the region, is going to impact tax base, housing, education here in Clay County and throughout. But in addition to that, we want to make sure that we're growing the economy by attracting targeted companies into this region. We've had a lot of success just since the start of this year and previously, but I think just the start of this year, when we look at growth around ag tech, around bioscience, around autonomous systems, we think there's a huge opportunity for our market. We've seen that, but we think if we could direct even more attention to it, working in partnership with higher ed, especially when it comes to some of these sectors where they really need a talented workforce, all those things are going to be really important. And then, to continue to focus on the entrepreneurial landscape here, this is one of the strongest entrepreneurial systems in the country. In fact, next month, we'll have a delegation from Ames, Iowa, coming in, where Iowa State University is headquartered, and the top reason they're coming here is they see what's happening in the entrepreneurial ecosystem, and they want to learn from our region on how to beg, borrow, and steal some of those successes for their market. So, we feel very strongly that raising our goals in this area, in terms of the number of projects, the new job creation, the wages of those jobs, the total capital investment, all of that is possible with this alignment and this new program of work. And really, what it comes down to at the end of the day, and I assume in your roles as county commissioners, is the whiff 'em, what's in it for us? What does it mean in terms of new taxes that you would have available to you to support your mission? We, as you know, have used a third-party economist, applied economist out of NDSU, to give us a sense of, if we were to attract or help our existing companies grow, just like we've reported in the past with our results, but looking forward to the next four years, if we're going to grow as we've already done, if we just continue to do what we're doing, and that's what you see on the bottom there, and what that tax revenue means to the taxing bodies in Clay County, about 1.5 million, if we're able to be successful with the goals we have in this program of work, we expect to see that, at a minimum, grow to over $2 million of additional tax revenue here in Clay County. So, quite a difference of growth opportunity, and we think those are conservative numbers because there's a lot of things that went into the methodology to come up with those, and we wanted to be conservative. We took all big projects that we've had in the last five years, and we're assuming we won't have those in terms of our calculation. I'm guessing we probably will have one or two in the region, but we took that out. We didn't account for any increases in property value over time. We accounted for less workers than what you normally have during, due to automation, and we used the housing need study that was completed last year for our region through MetroCog to better understand where likely we would see the houses located, and then obviously, the property tax values for the individual cities and the counties. So, all of that was done conservatively to give us the number that you saw on the previous slide of upwards of a little over $2 million annually. So, one of the things that came about in these discussions in this partnership was, we want to make sure that everybody knows, I'll just say, who has the X on their back? Who's charged with leading different aspects of this programming? Obviously, you heard Shannon talk about public policy and workforce development. You hear me talk about business development and a lot of data and analytics. The leadership and our teams are committed to leading in each of these areas, so you know, we know, who's in charge of using those resources to accomplish these goals, and that's all spelled out. We actually have an MOU that's in nearly completed form, that the leadership group will be using to help guide our work over the next four years as well. When we're successful, we expect to see these type, kind of, numbers across the regional economy, so we're really excited. And again, these are not just based on wishes. We've looked at the data and the achievements that we've had as a region over the past five to 10 years to calculate where we think we're going to go for successful. And so, we're really excited and ready to go to hopefully achieve this kind of, this kind of outcome for the marketplace. In terms of the overall program itself, we tested in the market and we're, we'll call it shooting for, a total budget over four years of just shy of $24 million. Our formal request for your consideration for the next budget cycle is $250,000. Where that number comes from, a few areas. One is, I think your total investment in both our organizations is $185,000 in the current year. When we approached Cass County and had our discussions with them last month, they committed in their budget process to 2.5 million for 2025 as a commitment to this plan of work. I don't want to speak for the county commissioners directly, but I can say the feeling we got from them was very positive, was hopeful, and a very similar presentation to them with some different metrics in terms of economic outcome. If you'll recall, last year, I presented to the commission, looking at the economics of this entire region. Where's, how's the property tax break out? How does sales tax? How does population growth, employment growth? And if you'll recall, the growth of the region historically has been about 85%, 90% on the North Dakota side, about 10% to 15% on the Minnesota side. So, to ask for an equal investment doesn't make sense. To make a request for a fair investment, we think does, and that's why the request for the $250,000 at about 10% of what Cass County's doing, about 10% of what the economic growth has tended to be, so we wanted to put that in front of you for conversation and consideration. So, with that, we'd be happy to answer questions and have a dialogue about this.
Can I just add, Commissioner, or sorry?
Go ahead.
If I may just add, the other piece of this is, with Cass County's $2.5 million budget, we also have the private sector, and that's a one-to-one match. So, the county is really looking at the fact that we need to have a one-to-one match. Our goal is to raise $3 million from the private sector so that we have an even match to public-sector dollars, because that's, we really believe that there should be, as you all are well-aware, a public-private partnership means making sure that everyone is there and has assets at the table, so.
Questions? Commissioner Krabbenoff.
Thank you. As we look at your potential revenue here or commitment, tell me how far, you talked about Cass and Clay, tell me how far you're more than...
From the city's perspective? Yeah, so we're still in conversations with the cities as far as how this looks. We obviously are very cognizant of the taxpayer dollars, and we don't want to make sure that we're doubling any taxpayer dollars, but at the same time, if there's particular fee-for-service activities that are done by the cities, we'll want to address that, but the ask primarily right now has been with both counties. Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Thanks also for bringing your board chairs. It's always great to see you and welcome you here. Certainly, over the past year, I've been fortunate enough to take part in a number of the events and meetings and dialogues that have been had between both of the organizations, so thank you for that. Certainly, as we look forward to budgets, as you know, it's always tricky and tight, and we have to be conscious about how we allocate our funds. Since it is fair season, I'm a 4-H mom, and so we always talk about that cost per wear. And I really do appreciate the plan, looking forward, and how we use the funds that are leveraged as much as possible, and, you know, I'm trying to glean from the conversation where those challenges and opportunities are, and certainly have been around long enough to know that there are challenges and opportunities between Minnesota and North Dakota. And I just really want the spaces in which we're having the dialogues to be as fruitful as possible, in terms of when challenges are presented, how do we then forward that message on? Certainly, with private-sector boards, you can talk about that and the workforce challenges there, but how do we then forward that to bodies like ourselves, that we can utilize other methods to deal with the challenges? And I'm not sure we, meaning all collectively, we do the best at that. And so, as we're working with companies or existing businesses that identify challenges that will need to create a move or a change, how do we work through that? And that's maybe more of a, more of a, as we go to our boards and different dialogues, take it there, but as I sit here, that's what I struggle with, is so-and-so has legitimate issues and challenges that could be remedied by going here, but how could we fix it there in order to change that? And so, down the rabbit hole I go, but those are just the challenges that I think we all really do face, and we need to think outside of the box, all of us, and I think Innovate 28 does that, understanding that we aren't going to bring 2.5 million to the table in this avenue. We do have a phenomenal Career Academy on this side, too, that is transformative in how companies can access workforce. And so, you know, I think we'll think really carefully about how we go forward with this, but what I will say is, our voice has been elevated in a way that it hasn't been in a long time, and we've been able to, as I attended the Greater Fargo-Moorhead, or the Greater Moorhead Day at the Capitol, we were able to pull committee chairs in on a whim. I mean, if you've been at the Capitol, that doesn't happen unless you have, you know, pretty good relationships built. And so, I think we're building on that and will continue that, and as you said, it was a very large presence there that is bringing a voice to western Minnesota in St. Paul, and that really does need to happen as we continue to pull funds this side, but, you know, certainly willing to be part of the solution as we work forward with all the challenges. So, thank you.
Great. I think that's a really good comment, and when we are, when we thought about this around, what does engagement look like, right? For those that are investing in this, but also just general engagement with citizens, with residents, with business owners. So, a couple things. One, we are very committed, as investors, an advisory group that allows us to talk one-on-one with our investors, those that are investing at higher levels or are highly invested. So, that advisory role is going to be really important for open dialogue around, because all of this doesn't happen without a lot of hard work, a lot of partnership, and a lot of open communication. What's working? What's not working? What do we want to do? So, both Joe and I are very committed to that open conversation and that relationship. I think the other part of this is identifying who at the county is most passionate and wanting to be involved and engaged with, whether that be the public policy space, the talent and workforce space, or the business development space. So, very committed to that, and to your point on being able to take in information from businesses, those, that information coming from you is really important to us. You have a great finger on the pulse of what's happening here in Clay County, and so, being able to bring that to us to say, hey, maybe you guys want to reach out to this company, whether it's either of our team members, to say they have an issue with this. And the one thing that we have found already is kind of a quick win between our two organizations is, as Joe's team is out there doing really great business retention visits, what's happening now is if they identify a public policy issue or a talent and workforce issue, that immediately an email gets triggered to our team that is able to work together. So, we're seeing tremendous synergies between the two teams already, and that's just going to help get to that solution-based strategy that we want to do to be, come together to solve the greatest challenges that are facing our communities, so.
Yeah, you know, it's a high-tech, high-touch, right? It's the data, going out and collecting that, and knowing that we've got a team out there that's hearing things, and they need to communicate that to somebody who has maybe a solution for them, whether it's a public entity or another private entity. I think of like, the Career...
And that's just going to help get to that solution-based strategy that we want to do to be, come together to solve the greatest challenges that are facing our communities, so.
Yeah, you know, it's a high-tech, high-touch, right? It's the data, going out and collecting that and knowing that we've got a team out there that's hearing things, and they need to communicate that to somebody who has maybe a solution for them, whether it's a public entity or another private entity. I think of like the Career Academy and the outreach that we've had where we're talking to a company that literally is located right next to the Career Academy, but they hadn't connected to one another. And so, making that connection, to see them starting to work with students as they're making, you know, the, I can't have my phone in here, right? I left it in my car. But, you know, like the Otter Box cover that's made by a company right next to the Career Academy, right? And they're not connecting with one another necessarily. So, I think sometimes it's a lot of people on the street communicating. I mean, we still are a small market, right? And we still know one another pretty well. And so, seeing both the high-touch with data and technology coupled with just, or high-tech coupled with the high-touch that we have, we've got to continue to do that. And this is sort of putting that in writing, putting that in an MOU, putting that in a real commitment where the leaders on both sides of us are pretty much saying, we have to continue to do this as a staff level, so make sure you're doing it.
The questions, comments. Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Starting off, you know, I think the workforce development, it's a critical component. And I, you know, I think from my growing up many years ago was a, it was kind of a common theme, boy, everybody should go and have a four-year college degree. And we're seeing an awful lot of changes going on, and we're seeing people in the trades businesses that are making very, very good incomes for their families. And, you know, so to somehow help promote the fact that, I think it's more parents that get in the way of their kids than anything else in that regard. That they, boy, we sure want our kids to get a four-year degree when in fact, that it's not necessarily needed. If they want to encourage it, that's great. But I want to talk a little bit about, you know, there's no secret that it's, there's more hurdles in doing business in Minnesota than there is in North Dakota. I mean, that's just, there's just no secret in that fact. And the investments that our government entities have made in, through the Chamber and all others to help continuously make sure that our border cities legislation stays in place to at least lift some of that burden that there is between the two sides of the river in regards to having quality businesses open up in Minnesota. I think it's really important. And I appreciate the fact that there's always consideration to try to expand those border cities legislation to include more. You know, and other, you know, when we talk about things that the government does, too, we can't ignore our investment in infrastructure that allows those things to happen. In the year 2025, we are going to be writing a check for 1.5 million dollars for the underpass project that's coming out of Clay County's budget. And that's to help to prepare for what we hope to be a new and exciting development business and residential area in Moorhead, which is our, you know, our number one city, biggest city in the county. So, you know, so we have to do our part, and we have to do it in many ways. And we continue, and I certainly appreciate the information that you provided in Innovate 28. I think there's some really encouraging things that I'm seeing in this. And I do really appreciate that, because I've sometimes been confused. What's the Chamber doing? What's Greater Fargo-Moorhead DTC doing? And so, now seeing this, and I even liked that idea on that page where you said, okay, well, Chamber's taking the priority here and secondary, or vice versa. And yeah, that right there, I think that's, who's in the leading role and who's in the supporting role. So, at least we know where each of those efforts are going, and I really appreciate that. And again, I'd like to echo what Commissioner Mojo said, too, about what's been going on at the state level through the Chamber efforts with Moorhead Days. And that I think there are people listening, which I think is encouraging, so thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of observations. Shannon, you've done a remarkable job of addressing a real need we've got here. Your experience in the metro area has paid off. I've gone to the first Moorhead Day up at the Capitol, and they were stunned. We're the second-largest metropolitan area in the state. And when the former director of deed came in town, he was totally unaware. No clue of the critical position we're in. And now, he's running the Strib, and they're outreaching to outstate Minnesota. I'm sure it's for circulation, it's for people getting subscriptions, but it's also a commitment to what the reality is, is that we carry a lot of the burden here. And it's all not metro-centric with Minneapolis-St. Paul. And you've done a great job of aligning us to get that out, but it's got to continue. The last session was a disappointment. But with that, great ideas. Some of the things for our juvenile facility have come up that are only getting bigger. And good ideas and things to make this a prosperous community. The seeds are planted, we've just got to cultivate them. The issue we've got with business is that we are always going to be in competition with North Dakota, if not intentionally, situationally. When people are looking at the benefits of where they want to put their business, a lot of times, we've got the worst hand on the, at the table. But we also have a lot of opportunities, and things are happening in this community right now that are going to open those up. But we've got to be patient, we've got to address issues like infrastructure. Downtown Moorhead is not going to work if you don't have underpasses. And we are investing money in the, from the county and from our, certainly from Moorhead, and certainly getting state and federal funds, railroad money, all of it to get these things done. That's a focus that we, is pretty Minnesota-centric. And there's a lot of, simply by funding mechanisms that North Dakota has, where there are going to be things that both of your organizations are going to be North Dakota-centric. And it's not going to be divided up evenly sometimes. There are things we've got to pay for over here. We've got to come up with funding. Part of it is our rural communities, our cities. Those are great areas. And right now, I look at Clay County, and sometimes I feel like we're treated like a flyover between the metro and the lakes and Fargo. And Moorhead and Clay County are just sort of seen as the space people have to drive to get to their lake place or their job. It doesn't have to stay that way. But I think it's incumbent on us as a board to identify the players that are in our county that may or may not be interested in something they see as Fargo. Frankly, there are people here that may or may not be interested in seeing, in things they see as Moorhead-centric. And we've got to address their needs, the businesses in Barnesville and Holly, in Dilworth and Glendon, all, you know, some of our township issues. And that's, when we look at our funding, those are the things we've got to consider. Because at this point in time, if it goes on the levy, we have to have a strong justification and a strong track record to show people, you know, they've proven time and time again here with some of the sales tax issues and some of the expansion the county has done, that if we have a good reason and we talk to the public, they don't mind paying taxes for it. But it's got to be something that they immediately identify as beneficial, not just to them personally, but to the community. And when we look at budget increases on anything, those are the things we've got to consider. And I really appreciate you coming in here and informing us and giving a thoughtful presentation like this so that we can grapple with this when we, when we sit down and figure what we're going to pay and where. And at this point in time, the more information we have, the better off we are. And I appreciate you coming in today and providing us with this great information. And it's always great to have leadership, leadership like Jim and Tammy coming in, showing that this just isn't organizations, but you have ties into the community that make us prosper. Has anybody got anything else? Have you guys got anything you want to say in closing, or?
Just real quick, yeah, I just am very excited about the collaboration that we're seeing here and fully support it. Makes sense, it's efficient, and it'll be productive.
You know, and this has been going on, but, you know, this plans for '25 to '28. I just want to mention a couple of things real quick from Commissioner Campbell. You talked about education. You know, we're blessed with five higher education institutions, three here in Clay County. Shannon and I have been meeting with them to look at what their central issues are. I think you wouldn't be surprised that enrollment and public policy are important to them. And we've been very focused on supporting that. In fact, we have a Bioscience Summit next month where the Career Academy students will be able to attend, meet with higher ed if they want to continue their education, or with companies in the region. And we hope to have a couple hundred students that are in higher ed attending because we want to keep them here working for those types of companies across the region. So, I just wanted to bring that up because these things are already happening. We're priming the pump to really take this to the next stage.
Yeah, so maybe just in closing, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your commitment to Clay County, but also to the entire region. It is, as we've mentioned, there are challenges on the Minnesota side, but there are a lot of assets and a lot of opportunities here. And we want to be able to work with you, alongside you, to better tell the story of those assets and of those opportunities, and really to leverage relationships to better the overall region, but really have that focus also here in Clay County and allow for the growth and prosperity that has been happening to continue to happen in a much more intentional fashion. So, we realize that you've got some tough decisions ahead of you regarding investments, and we hope that you'll look favorably upon the work we've done in the past and the plan to go forward in the future to continue to support our work. So, thank you so much.
Okay, next up, the Historical and Cultural Society, Clay County. And we've got Dr. Maureen Kelly Johnson, Executive Director. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Now, for something. Thank you so much for your continued support of our efforts to preserve and share the history and culture of Clay County and for this opportunity to share just a bit about our programming. I'll be quite brief. I'm happy to report that as of the end of June, we've had a very healthy year in terms of visitors to the museum, and I'm ready to declare the COVID pandemic over as far as our organization goes. It was a very slow four-year recovery, as it was with most people. But it was just exciting to look at the numbers at the end of June and go, oh, we're almost there. It's really exciting. We are in line to meet our admissions, gift shop, and membership goals. We've been successful in writing and receiving a number of grants over the year, and many of our donors have been generous. We continue to serve our Clay County constituents in a variety of ways. Our Idacho Manapi Clay County at 150 exhibit remains up through December 31st, and we had many school tours over the last three Mays that came in specifically to look at that. It is, was designed with the curriculum needs in mind. About 1,500 kids, fourth grade through high school, come in each year just specifically to look at the history exhibits. As you all know, longtime archivist Mark Peel retired February 24th after serving 37 years. Historian Marcus Krieger and our new archivist Petra Gunderson-Lathe have continued to make numerous public presentations on Clay County history throughout the year. Petra said recently that one of the favorite parts of her new job is helping all of the researchers who drop into the Clay County Archives that are free and open to the public. They drop in with various questions, whether it's genealogy or the history of their house or photographs of the business that was there 100 years ago for current businesses. She really enjoys helping people learn about Clay County history. We continue to preserve a collection of over 12,000 historical objects, and we're working on improving our collections' conditions by upgrading our storage equipment as grants are awarded. And we maintain about 500 linear feet of archival materials, including records and photographs, as well as our 14,000 glass plate negatives that were created 100 years ago that document a great deal of rural Clay County in particular. County funds are used to support collection staff salaries. Archivist Petra Gunderson-Lathe, collections manager Lisa Vida, and collections assistant Kevin Wander. We are in the middle of what will likely be about a 10-year project to photograph every object in the collection. And the long-term goal is to make more of our collection accessible to the public through online means. Many photographs and artifact records are already available to the public through Minnesota Collections. That is a statewide website that helps Historical Society share their collections with the public. Staff are currently developing a new Clay County-centered exhibition about food production, tentatively called Land to Table: Clay County Food Stories, to open in February of 2025. And that will be up for two years to allow teachers to integrate a museum visit into their curriculum. It's fun to work with historians. They get excited about the most interesting things. And lately, it's Barnesville's Potato Days. It's just, the history is very exciting to them. And there was a point where someone dressed in a bat costume and jumped out of an airplane. And, you know, I mean, it's just all kinds of odd and interesting stories, and they just love that. So, as we are on a calendar year for our fiscal year, we do not approve our budget until December. I will forward that as soon as it is approved by the Board of Directors. And does anyone have any questions for me?
Questions?
Not a question, but just to echo on some of the things you talked about to the board. It's been a real treat for me to be part of the board. It's also been a real learning experience working with you every month on the Finance Committee. And I think a couple of points you expressed right away show the success, Maureen, of what you do and your staff does, and that is seeing that attendance continually go up. And it reflects on your exhibits, that, you know, that you providing the opportunity as well as, I think, Marcus and his outreach, much like Mark did before he retired. And so, I think you've just got a real continuum of positive things going on. And I want to thank you for that. I think your skills are, you've been there many years, and your ability to know those grant opportunities that are so important to this, that entity. And, you know, and your writing capability aligns with, you get a lot of successful grants done. Thank you very much, and great work.
Thank you. Just to reiterate, we have, over the 16 years I've been here, received, brought in to our community over a half a million dollars in legacy amendment grants. We have four opportunities, five actually, opportunities a year to apply for Minnesota Historical Society funds. And I actually apply in every grant round. There is always something that we can apply for. We don't always get them, but bringing that money in is real important. And then, we have also gotten legacy grant funds through the arts programming that we continue to have. So, it's been a So it's been a real boon to us, and we continue to support that endeavor and hope that it will continue for decades to come.
Just a little plug for the society, for me. My first night in Moorhead was part of the hiring process for Police Chief, and the four candidates and a bunch of people from the community went out and sat around the Yom Kompst and had dinner. And one of the members of the Historical Society, I do not remember who he was, asked me my heritage, and I told him Irish, a little bit of German. He said, Irish? You've got some Scandinavian blood in you. And when we did a, my brother had a cheek swab done, and yes, we're 14% Scandinavian with no knowledge of it, nothing in the family history. But I brought people from down south that have visited me and family members out to look at the Stave Church and the Yom Kompst and the presentations who were there. One of them resulted in my sister-in-law, who's a very talented artist, rendering the Stave Church in a snow scene, and it's out there on gift cards now if anybody's interested. But that is just a delight and a wonderful thing to have in our community, and I encourage people to get an annual membership and support it because what's being done out there is fantastic work, and it's what makes a community a community. And you have done a wonderful job.
Thank you.
I've watched that. I think I got put on the board about the same time you started, and it's just been full speed ahead with you and Mark, you know, remarkable work that was done. I just want to personally thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Next up, we have Lays and Purries Community Action, Lori Schwartz and Robin Christensen. Welcome.
Ah, got it. All right. Good morning, thank you for having us. Lori and I are back again, as we have been for the last several years, to present on our requests for your consideration. I'm Robin Christensen. Just as a reminder, I am the Economic Empowerment Director at CAP LP, so I oversee the division that our Aging Services or our Services for Older Adults fall underneath of. And so every year annually, we have two requests for consideration, one for our Senior Coordinator position. This staff member works one-on-one with individuals, older adults living in Clay County, doing a variety of things, whether it's, it's kind of a catch-all, there's really nothing she can't do, but anything from food insecurity to Medicare benefits counseling to housing assistance, she kind of does it all. She even does taxes for us. And so she's working with probably about, last year, about 500 contacts throughout the year with older adults who are living throughout Clay County. And a lot of her time is spent traveling to people, so kind of meeting them where they're at, meeting with senior groups out in our rural communities, and kind of making sure that everybody is getting the same information, whether you live in Moorhead or you live in Yulin. The other part of our request is for our Rural Routes Transportation Service. This is something that we started, again, back in 2019, giving individuals rides from the rural parts of Clay County into the Fargo-Moorhead area for a variety of reasons, whether it's I need to go to the grocery store, I need to see my doctor, I'd like to go to the airport to go on vacation. It's just kind of a wide variety of reasons why people call us for transportation needs. I am happy to report that we are on track to exceed our number of rides from last year. I think when we met last August, we were averaging about 17 or 18 rides a month. Now we're up to 25. Again, not where we want to be, but obviously what we're doing and what we continue to do is working, and so hopeful that momentum will just keep going. A couple of things on the horizon with our Rural Routes. We've had conversations with both Commissioner Mojo and Administrator Larson about possibly helping give rides to the DMV if, for some reason, the city map bus transportation thing doesn't work out. And so helping people get from that last stop on map bus, which is Walmart in Dilworth, up to the DMV and back, because we know a lot of individuals that are utilizing the DMV and maybe don't have their own transportation. A lot of them are our constituents that we serve, which are the low-income population. And so trying to make sure that they're able to still access those services, utilizing our transportation services if they're not in use at that point in time. Something else that just came up recently, too, with Rural Routes Transportation, is that we were actually contacted by a staff member who works for Public Health, and she was wondering if we were set up to accept payment from, like, health plans. So she works with Ucare as a care coordinator, and so that is something that we're obviously having conversations with. It's just starting, but it's kind of exciting, too, to maybe be able to access that as a way of paying for people's transportation on our bus, because she said specifically the person that she's working with did not want to take the taxi that was being offered to them. And so maybe this was just an alternative option for that person who is on both Medicare and Medicaid. That's all I have. If you have, if you have anything to add?
I don't, I don't have anything to add. I just thank you again for allowing us to come back.
Thank you again for allowing us to come back and request consideration for supporting the Clay Seniors. I don't doubt for a second that, I know everybody in this room knows the importance of, you know, taking care of our seniors, and I know that we agree that as long as we can keep them in their homes, the better quality of life for them and their families, and not only in the long run, does it end up being less expensive. I won't get into the struggles we've had with our transportation service. Again, we have done a lot of work on different techniques for recruitment, and it slowly but surely seems to be increasing, again, not to where we want it to be. Robin and Amanda did somewhat of another needs assessment or survey for our Clay Seniors, again, this past year, and it's showing that they still want the service. And so we just, again, appreciate you hearing us out, and any consideration would be greatly appreciated.
Commissioner Mojo.
Sorry, well, both Commissioner Kravadoff and I, his hands went up really quickly. As you know, both he and I serve on the CAP LP board, and one thing that wasn't in the presentation is the hundreds of thousands of dollars in additional funds that are leveraged through grant writing. CAP LP has a very successful track record in bringing an enormous amount of money to the folks in which you serve that don't always require local matches. And so I think that it's important to also note that how important that is to the programming that you do in our community. I really do appreciate CAP LP's willingness to be part of a solution to serve folks that are struggling, and to hear that there may be a service gap in transportation for the folks that access the DMV, and to be so quickly willing to be part of a solution, understanding that it might not be a long-term solution, but to also raise the visibility of the Rural Routes service, I really think will be helpful to both entities as we go forward. One, to Clay County, to make sure that people have an ability to get to that facility, but also to CAP LP for being present. Often, the Rural Routes employee is not only connecting people physically to the places they need, but also to the services that are provided in the community. It really is quite helpful in that capacity. And we are all creatures of habit, and I will say, if I call a place and they're not open for whatever reason, sometimes it just gets backlogged, and we're not really quick to reuse that service. And raising the visibility of the bus, I think, really will be helpful, and particularly just connecting it with that shortstop to Walmart will be helpful. So I understand that there are lots of requests going forward, but having been someone who's gone to the senior group and rollog and heard firsthand how much they appreciate the ability to get into town for a reasonable amount of money, but also to folks not only in Moorhead, but also in the rural, certainly have my support on this piece.
I just want to add to that, I'm on the Clay County Seniors Group that works with CAP, is working with CAP LP. The stories we get on the use of the senior transportation, you know, here in the metro area, we've got senior rides, and it's available and it's present, and it functions at a pretty high level because of the density. The rural areas, it's even more pronounced, the importance of having a means to get to doctor's appointments, to get shopping, to get groceries, to get to places that are critical for people that live in a rural area and don't have transportation. So that's something I feel very strongly needs to be supported as well. Paul?
So if I just add, you're way too humble. You could be talking about yourself more. And so let me point out a few things, if I may. I absolutely believe that CAP LP, in my short time of coming to know over the last year and a half, is absolutely a gem in our area that most people that don't utilize your services have no clue what you do. And it's tremendous. The amount of work that, the families that you help to keep them in their homes, the education you give through the Head Start Program, which continually grows, which brings more funding for you to give those opportunities on a long waiting list of people that need your service. And then the other thing, I believe you received a five-star rating this year that we had talked about, that is extremely hard to get, and when you talk a federal program, you're competing against a lot of people. And Lori is Executive Director. You're a star for not only our area, but for the state and the community. You're well-recognized, and it doesn't go unnoticed.
Thank you.
Any other comments? We don't want to embarrass you all too much. Thank you for the presentation today.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Justin, Justin Sormer, County Engineer.
Yes, good morning. First item I have is requesting the approval to hire three motor grader operators. So we have three upcoming retirements this fall, and I'd just like to get them posted well before the winter time. And so we will have some internal people that will likely apply, and we do have to post it five days internally, but I do want to get this out to the public as soon as possible.
This will be with backfill.
Correct.
Any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chair. Both Commissioner Campbell and I attended the Highway Tracking last week, where we talked about this, and it really does seem to make sense, given the timelines. But I'll make a motion to approve with backfill.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. If not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. That was easy.
Yep. Second item I have is along the same lines, approval to hire a shop foreman. So our shop foreman is going to be retiring here in the next couple of months. So this position does carry a lot of responsibilities, and I'd like to start advertising this one right away with backfill if needed.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, this also was part of the discussion at the Highway Tracking Committee last week, and certainly there are some concerns in regards to the huge need and duties that this position has, so I'm hopeful that we are able to fill it quickly and that there is an amount of overlap so that they can learn from the individual that's in that position. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve with backfill.
And motion second, further discussion. If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we've got a closed session. Board Discussion Reference Labor Negotiations per Minnesota Statute 13D.03, Clay County Attorney Brian Milton. Have a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to go into closed session referencing what was posted.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Okay, we're going into closed session. Now we're back in session. Next up, James O'Donnell, request to approve the rehire of an open position in non-secure unit. James, welcome.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I'm here to request permission to rehire an open position that's in our non-secure unit. It's in our 2024 budget, and it's for our transitional program, our male unit, so it's necessary for safe and effective programming. I'd request a backfill if anything would come from, depends on who's hired.
Any questions for James? Commissioner Campbell.
James, in that position for the transitional piece, do we have, do we have somebody in that position 24/7?
Yes, in that unit, there's, so this would be one of the three that we have for, there's an overnight, an AM, and a PM in that transition unit, and this would be one of the three there that's.
And so when we advertise that, do we advertise, I mean, sometimes it might be somebody taking over night units, so is it advertised in that regard, too, what the hours would be?
It would be. And then this one would be a day evening, so it would be between AMs and PMs. It's not the overnight one.
Okay. Any other questions?
Move approval.
Do I have a second? Okay, motion second, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion passes. You're up for the next one.
All righty. I will, I got two. I got the secure and the non-secure budget 2025 proposal for you. I believe those are in front of you. I will start out with the secure budget. Again, it's, you know, it's an enterprise fund. Ultimately, the authority lies with this board, but it does belong to an 11-member cooperative service agreement, the secure portion does. So that's with 10 other member counties. I brought this budget before the Advisory Board last month, and they preliminarily approved it in their capacity, but bring it to this board here, as this board has the authority. I'll start out in the revenue section for the secure portion. If you look down, I'd like to start out at miscellaneous revenue, and you'll see 1,640,000 in miscellaneous revenue coming in. That would be the revenues or expenditures that's left from 2023, and that is with the body worn cameras already taken out of it, that was approved last month by you guys. The body worn cameras, again, is 125,000, and that will pay for five years of the services for that with us. So what's left is that little over 1 million, and what that does is that comes and it offsets the member county, so it offsets Clay County's and the 11 member county's costs. So going down, you know, we got 830,000 requested from Clay County. That's down 1 and 1/2% from last year. Requesting 1.8% from our membership, and that's down. Requesting 1.8 from our membership, and that's down about 1% from last year. And the third line there, revenue line is 1.779 million. That's what's, we're estimated for our non-members, and I base that on 13 non-members usage per day. We've been averaging about 19, so I feel very confident about that. We like to be pretty conservative with that estimate because, again, you don't know what's going to happen. I mean, there's things, in a, in a month or two, things can really change, so, so we feel pretty confident about that. So that's where we got our revenues.
James, did that, excuse me, did that include the increased daily rate?
Did, yep.
Because it went to 375?
375, yep. Yeah, and so just, you know, kind of in comparison, I mean, that's, that's pretty good. I mean, 375 is very expensive. Juvenile programming is very expensive. I've just got our closest regional facility to us that does pretty close to the same as we are, about 420 this year is what theirs just came out at. So, and again, that, that has a lot to do with the moves that we made prior to. That's why we're able to do it a little bit better. That expansion was just a great move. It put Clay County in leaps and bounds ahead of everybody else, kind of playing catch-up now, especially with that new legislation that was passed last year around room time and stuff. A lot of facilities are making massive changes to keep up, and we're, we're able to just move ahead is where we are. So very thankful for those moves that happened prior to me getting here. Makes my job a lot easier. So just kind of moving down into the expenditures. Again, it's just, you have your staffing, little bit up again, you know, about 5% increase looking. Again, that's just cost of living, things like that, steps increases. In our secure portion, we've actually had some better retention than we've, than we've had in previous years, so that's, that's very nice, but it's kind of reflected, but it's only about 5%. The biggest change you'll see here in part of the salaries is the overtime. You'll see I'm increasing that from 100 to 150,000, it's 50% increase. The reasoning for that is pre-COVID, no, during COVID, I assume that a lot of those changes were temporary with the staffing issues we're having, but ultimately, a lot of changes came with the, the complexity of kids and youth that were getting into those programs and the need for overtime in a sense to take care of some of those kids, whether it be one-on-one. There's different extreme cases that, that take specialty staff. You know, it's going to take our full-time staff to, to stay, you know, until 2:00 in the morning to make sure everything's safe and secure, that, you know, we have somebody with the skills that can handle that versus, you know, variable hour that might not be able to handle that. So kind of, I'm just trying to make that correction so it's more reflective every year because if you look at the previous years, I've always underestimated how much we need for that, and it's just very, very unpredictable of what we need and when we need it. Then kind of, just kind of moving down, next big increase you'll see is association dues and memberships. That is for mostly our CSTS, which would be our computer information system that we keep our files on. The cost of that went up for, one, our, our shooting numbers went up, so our percentage that we owe, we, we go in with about 10 other facilities in the state for this program, and our, our numbers went up a little bit, so our shares, costs went up a little bit as well to reflect that. Going down, you'll see other professional services. A lion's share of that is our nursing and our medical costs, but in addition to that is a lot of the specialty services that we need, would be medication or a specialty service from a certain doctor, a certain therapist. But if you look, you know, a lot of that is offset, so the specialty costs that come in from medication expenses and stuff, those actually get billed back to the county. We pay it upfront, so the youth gets those services, so there's no waiting, and then we backbill the county that the kid came from, and that's where you get the miscellaneous reimbursement on the top, 5838. That's where that line item comes in. But the majority of that is, again, our, our nursing. Kind of moving down, another increase you'll see is travel and expenses. Again, that's, that's moving up, kind of reflective of where we are in the state. We're kind of getting more and more involved, so we went up another $2,000, $2,500. You know, getting in with different committees and different, you know, different says and different information that we're getting and being part of these groups is actually paying off significantly for us, and that's one of the reasons why we're able to hold low is we have knowledge on the pre-end, on the front end, so that's been very beneficial Office supplies, that's another major increase. Again, a lot of that is with the different documentations and stuff that we're doing, so we got a lot more paper files, a lot more documenting, a lot more, a lot more office supplies that that takes to, to do that and keep those records. Repair and maintenance supplies, I jumped that up another $2,500. That's kind of reflective of our facility after the remodels in year, year six or seven. And we like to keep things very, very nice. You know, it kind of goes back to, you know, a broken windows model theory, you know. If something's broken, we get it fixed. If it's something that's dirty, because it, it does affect the minds of the youth and the staff and everybody. If they're in an area that's rundown, stinks, there's garbage, then everybody kind of treats that way, that's where their attitude sets. But if we keep it clean, you know, just like a public school, looks like a nice school when you come through there, keep it up to that standard, that's the attitude and that delivers that, that comes with that. So that, that comes with a little bit of a cost. Then just increase the internal services a little bit to keep up with ongoing costs. The miscellaneous, I'm going to work with the Otter's Office and get that broken out a little bit more, so maybe we can have just a separate line for maybe like the backgrounds or something, because that's like a lion's share of that. So instead of just having miscellaneous, it can be more, I guess, transparent in what it is, but that's backgrounds, it's subscriptions to different academic journals, different news prints, and tele, telehealth platforms that's HIPAA compliant and stuff like that. That's where those are at. Capital improvement, just keep that moving up a little bit. And work with Joe and the Otter's Office to make sure that we're not going to get stuck somewhere in the event of a major issue. Is there any questions on the secure budget?
Questions? Looks like I can move ahead.
All right, moving on to the non-secure budget. The non-secure budget, you'll see the major changes that there's, and that's due to the female program that will be starting in, in January. So the significant increases in the expenditures, you'll see that is, that's staffing and everything that goes along with staffing would be your health insurance or PRA, and then the rent, or our rent cost goes up, you know, another 60-some thousand, but that's rent paid to the county, to Clay County for usage of, of that space. So the, back to the revenues, up to the revenues portion of it, the revenues is, is very, very difficult, especially in our non-secure program, to kind of predict. Everything in the state is, is, it's getting worse and not better, and that's causing us as, you know, the safety net, we're picking up more and more services that, that should be delivered in elsewhere, whether it be at the state level or whatever it is. They're, they're not, youth are getting funneled to us that shouldn't be with us, and we're trying to provide the best care we can, and to try to figure out where that's coming from, if it's Clay County or non-Clay County. Clay County's going to get the preference. Clay County has a need, we're going to flex and do whatever we need to take care of Clay County's youth. We have space on the outside, then we will get the revenues from other member counties, but it, it all, is all dependent on Clay County's needs and what social services has, what law enforcement has. There's so, such unique cases in that non-secure program that it's just very hard to figure. The JAG grants, that's a grant, this is, this will be our sixth year on that grant, and that's been pretty nice. That's been paying for most of two positions in our, our male transition unit. So we continue to seek out grants whenever we can, work with different partners and stuff, because Clay County is doing things that are above and beyond other counties, and getting some grant money to help fund that is, is very beneficial. Going down to the expenditures, again, we talked about the salaries and everything that goes along with that. Association dues and memberships, that's up 1,000. That's again, the CSTS. Our non-secure is the same, same computerized system for tracking information. Training, you'll see an increase in training. Again, that's just an increase of staff for the female program and increase in overall. The medical consultant and other professional services, those ones kind of get pushed interchangeably, and it, it really all depends on what we need, because the youth will come in and they'll have a variety of issues, whether it be taken care of or not taken care of, and we might need a neuropsych, and that might cost about $4,000, and that might get the ball rolling for social services to get into a better placement somewhere else or to find a treatment plan, that, that can happen. So I mean, that, that's just hit and miss, and it's all dependent upon, upon the youth that we get. So a lot of that, equipment repair and maintenance, same thing. Try to keep the facility upkeep the best we can. And then the building rent is, I kind of already explained that with the new space, so. Has anybody got any questions with our non-secure? Non-secure is a, it's a pretty unique animal right now.
Questions for James. Okay, as usual, you've done a good job laying it out for us. We appreciate your report.
Thank you. Appreciate your support and appreciate the support, and I appreciate my staff, so, thank you.
Next up, Jill Olson, our facilities director. Request approval to increase the furniture, fixtures, and equipment budget to purchase a snow blower, mower, and trailer for the withdrawal management detox center.
Morning, Mr. Chair, board members. Yes, that's what I'm here today to, to request to purchase those three pieces of equipment. This is the piece, three-piece equipment we're going to use for grounds and snow removal for, for next year, and basically, we're going to have a snow, a snow blower attachment. I worked with Cory, and if you recall, during the Resource Recovery Center project, we bought a new skidster with that, and so we're going to kind of do a joint effort and, and purchase a snow blower and use it on that, and that will be used for, for all the buildings up there, but that, that's what the snow blower's for, and then the mower will be used for, during summer, for our crew to keep, keep the grounds updated and mowed, and then we're going to have a trailer to help be able to transport that stuff back and forth as long, as well as a, like a watering system. We're planning on putting hanging baskets up there like the campus for flowers. So all three are just kind of combined to help with the plan that we've put together for that, for the, for the withdrawal management up there. So total cost of all three was 16,719, and how we figured this out is the contingencies right now in the project for the withdrawal management, sitting at 184,000, just over. And so our, our goal would be to use some of that money, so that would decrease, but then we would increase our FFNE budget within there. So, so I have the numbers there to, to reflect that. So, and then if approved today, then we would remove, if you remember, I had 15,000 budgeted in the, in my maintenance budget, which, which is on the levy side, and so the construction committee has suggested to remove that and pay for it through the project. So, questions for me?
Questions? A motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Thanks, Jill.
Thank you.
Take it away, Quinn.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I'll try to keep it brief. I know you guys have been here for quite a while, so I'll just cruise right through.
We got a long day ahead of us.
Yes, absolutely. I want to provide a little bit of background before I speak to the motion I'm requesting. 2018, the Family First Prevention Services Act was passed. This was federal legislation that changed the way kind of the child welfare system works. What it does is it gives state, county, and tribal child welfare agencies the ability to receive 50% reimbursement for federally-approved services for children at risk of out-of-home placement. Kind of what worked in the past is they would reimburse costs after the fact, and with the Family's First Prevention Services Act, they wanted to reimburse services that would prevent children from, from going into out-of-home placement. With this being federal, the states had a lot of work to do to figure out exactly what would count towards services that would meet that federal definition. Since 2018, the state of Minnesota has recognized two services. It's called parent-to-teachers and motivational interviewing, which is what I'm going to talk about a little bit today. With motivational interviewing being one of the recognized prevention services, DHS in partnership with the Child Welfare Training Academy, have created a program to allow for some funds to exist to help counties pay for the quite costly motivational interviewing for child welfare staff. With that, we've entered into an agreement with DHS called Pathway 3, which is finding our own Mint certified trainer, so a nationally-recognized trainer to provide motivational interviewing, and as a part of that, DHS is going to assist in the payment of that with providing $14,000 to cover the cost of the training. With our Family's First Preservation Services allocation that we received for 2024, we're able to use a portion of that to cover the rest of the training. So between the allocation and this $14,000 from DHS, we'll be able to bring motivational interviewing training to our entire child welfare workforce. So I am requesting a motion to approve the acceptance of these funds and to execute the contract with DHS for the $14,000. Any questions for me?
Commissioner Kravenoff.
Yeah, just a couple things. So going through all the acronym, acronyms, I got most of what Mint is. What's the N?
Motivational interviewing, national trainers.
Okay. And then I'm just kind of curious, Mint and all staff, so how many members is that, or how many staff persons is that?
So we're going to train everyone, including our intake staff, so let's see, we have 12 and another 14, it'd be just under 30, 28, 28, 29? Yep.
Any other questions?
I certainly move for the, for us to allow them to receive payment of 14,000 from DHS for the training costs associated.
Second, the motion?
A motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to committee reports, and we're going to start with Kevin.
All right, on August 6th, we had a Highway Tracking Committee meeting. We had several discussions, and one was regarding the three motor grader operators, which we acted on today along with the shop foreman position. We did note, he was notified too, that there will be a maintenance We did note, he was notified too, that there will be a maintenance worker position coming up probably in the February to March timeframe next year. And engineering tech, senior engineering tech position that will also open up. And did inform us that Jill Helm was to start on August twelfth? I'm hoping that happened. That's yesterday, right? Yeah, okay, all right. There was some discussion regarding the Cassau two bridge. I think Commissioner Mojo had raised some, just some questions regarding about once that project is implemented, and if there were ever to be, or what the likely would be with the extra flow of water over that bridge, the damages that could occur to that. And the technical information today is that it would not impact the structure. However, I think they've, the Diversion Authority has also said that if it were to happen, that claims could be submitted to the Diversion Authority for that, any repairs that would need to be done. There was some discussion regarding vehicle purchases versus leases. Equipment purchases, talked about a Bobcat Paver. And construction updates, Cassau one is just about finished, and they're working on Cassau twenty-six. And the five-year plan will be coming, will be coming before to this board on September tenth. That basically is an open meeting where people are allowed to come in and comment on the proposed five-year plan. Yes, it'll be part of our board meeting. And then just, you know, items to be thinking about in the future. Another difficulty is there's, there are actually three motor graders that were due for replacement in two thousand and twenty-four. And the costs have gone from three hundred and nineteen thousand in two thousand and seventeen to five hundred and thirteen thousand in two thousand and twenty-four. Need this to say our internal service fund would be short. So we, you know, there's some discussions about are we going to keep those items longer than we did in the past? There was always a financial advantage to turning those in after seven years. And maybe that, maybe that financial opportunity or benefit no longer exists. So we're going to have to review that. When you consider cost of maintenance and everything, we have to take all of those things into consideration, or buying extended warranties is a possibility too, so. Then on August sixth, we had the Diversion Authority Planning Committee meeting. Much of it was, again, in regards to the Executive Director Application Screening and Interview Committee is the process. And my, the most recent information I got is that the timeline could be where, I think last time I mentioned the December to maybe January timeframe for hiring that position. Just based on some recent information I have in calendar adjustments, that we could have a selection down to three with the potential for going before the full, and then through the Planning Commission and into the full board, the three finalists potentially in October. So we'll see how that balances out. We continue to talk about the governance policies and updates. And we had a co-executive director update. And there is a, the amount of work that had, that's been done by the co-executive directors in addition to their full-time duties that they have as the Fargo City Manager and Cass County Administrator. Those two have taken on an awful lot of extra work. And they have to do that and still complete their full job. So there was a proposal or a suggestion that some compensators, additional compensation be given to them, going back, starting June first through whenever. And so that's going to be, I think that recommendation is going to be going to the full board for consideration. And I think it's going to be to try to come up with a percentage of what a co-executive director pay would have been, you know, in addition, so. On Wednesday, August seventh, we had our Red River Regional Dispatch Center Budget and Finance Committee meeting. Nothing really new to report there, the two thousand and twenty-four year date budget review, we went through that. Nothing new to report. I think all, everything there is, the two thousand and twenty-four budget is going as planned. Then on the Thursday, I attended virtually the Regional Dispatch Board Meeting. I will defer to Commissioner Ebinger, as he was, he's the chair of that group, to give that report. There was not a, not a lot of activity on that, on that particular meeting. And then that afternoon, I attended the Lakes Country Service Cooperative Board Meeting in Fergus Falls. And we did a recap of our conferences that were held in Duluth. And there was some, part of what they, what they do too is they work with a lot of government entities and private entities on providing services and purchasing abilities. And one of the things that they asked me to bring, it would be to, Steve, and I'll give this to you, but the cooperative purchasing connection and all of the different options that are available to assist government entities, whether it's counties, cities or school districts, to increase the ability for purchasing power. So I'll just, I'll provide, I'll give that to you, and you can provide it to those in charge of their purchasing in different areas, and see what benefits they might get from Lakes Country Service Cooperative. And I believe, let me just check real quick here in my book. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Krabonoff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Thursday, on the eighth, I had the Clay SWC de-mortg meeting. Overall, real good general business, just, there's a, again, a lot of money coming in and opportunity through soil health, both from the federal government, through federal grants and state grants. Number, about four of those were discussed, and bringing actually hundreds, another hundred and fifty thousand dollars into just Clay County on cover crops. I think most of it was pretty much monthly business outside of that. And then the following day on Friday, as part of, I'm going to bring this up, so I have it. Through AMC, and I don't know if any of the others were online with this, I know Steve and some staff. We had through AMC, or Minnesota Office of Cannabis Management. It was a, the webinar was called implementing chapter two forty, three forty-two and guidance for local governance on adult-use cannabis. And it was hour-long conversation and guidance. And maybe I'll let Steve go a little deeper on this, being he was with Jason McCoy and others in public health, right? And I just, the part that came to me is that I think we did well with the ordinance we set up. I think that, judging what I heard, that was definitely the right thing to do, because there are definitely changes that are going to be coming, and we'll adapt to those changes to ordinances we move along. Again, mostly, well, not most, all, the vetting for any type of people that are going to be registering to be licensed is all going to be vetted and gone through by the Office of Management of Cannabis. One note, if we have zoning applications that come in that are going to require a change, we'll have to have, whatever that zoning application is, to meet the requirements, we need to get that, have a zoning certificate to AMC within thirty days, rather than the typical sixty days. Beyond that, they talked about areas of, of our ordinances and numbers of, as far as retail, and also other areas that may have caps, others don't. They strongly recommend that we're always using our legal department in this area, which we will be doing. And then the one, I'll finish with this. The one thing that, in the ordinance we had, we had in there about the five hundred feet. But they talked, not, not only what the feet was, but where the footage is from. And I don't know if we had that in our ordinance or not, perhaps we did, but is it in the center or is it on the boundary?
We did not clarify that. We've actually already had a situation to which there'll be a question on that.
Okay, very good. So other than that, I'll leave the rest to Steve. But I thought it was very informative listening to that. And then last night, I was at the Buffalo Red Watershed District Meeting. We had a monthly meeting as well as the budget hearing. And the majority of the, well, was on the budget. And I just want to throw it out there, they've done a very good job of managing it. So if I go from twenty-four, what was approved last year into going, what's going to be requested in twenty-five, they actually had a general assessment increase of twenty-five hundred dollars out of a two million dollar levy. So they did very well with holding their expenses and getting with the money they have in many of their funds working in the right places. And so for, with that levy, if, when it comes before us to approve under two thousand and twenty-five, on general assessment, it would be sixteen dollars and sixty-two cents for a hundred thousand dollar value throughout the county. Other than that, pretty much general business. One thing that came up, and I don't know if roads and bridges has got some of this, but, or had some of this, but, you know, we're constantly working with slope failures in some of our ditches. And Justin is aware of this with the highway department. But it seems that possibly Norman County has had successes in a machine that does some cuts along slope failures, and then adds classified soils to it, holding it. And I don't know if that's being tried in, in our, in, I'm sorry, in Clay County yet. But there is a place in Waukesha County that they're going to work with their, their county highway department on a project down there in ditch twenty-two. So that's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you. Last week, I also attended the Highway Tracking Committee, as Commissioner Campbell reported on. And then Thursday, we had the transition committees for the two new facilities that will be opening in September and October. We talked about having a ribbon cutting and public tours on the same day, on a date that we're working through. I'm not sure we're prepared to say it today, but certainly we'll work through with staff to make sure that the public has the opportunity to celebrate with us as they're two very forward-facing customer service entities of the county. So more to come on that, and that concludes my reports.
Okay, thank you. On Monday, the fifth, I spoke with Ryan Mies, the State Auditor's Office. He's conducting an audit on the Partnership for Health. Answered a number of questions they had on that, just kind of pro forma. On Monday, or, I'm sorry, on Wednesday, man, having trouble reading my own notes here. I'm sorry, on Tuesday, the sixth, I attended a number of locations for night to unite in the fifth district. Spoke to a bunch, a number of citizens there. Answers a lot of questions involving local issues, many of which, again, this was in Morehead, and there were Morehead issues, but some of the road situations, I was able to direct them to where they could get some answers from Morehead on that. And we had a pretty, there was a great deal of interest in the police situation, law enforcement questions, which I think maybe I was able to give them some direction on as well. But it was a good night, we had some good groups out there, and I really enjoyed the getting out and meeting with them. On Wednesday, the following morning, I attended the Kiwanis Club meeting. I was invited to that. Had some very interesting questions about where the county is going, what our role is as county commissioners. It's amazing how many people don't really understand the depth of what county government does. It was a good, kind of a spirited morning on that. Thursday, I attended the Red River Regional Dispatch Center meeting, as Commissioner Campbell indicated. Wasn't a whole lot on the agenda. We did have a discussion about the vendors on the dispatch consoles, which are pretty expensive. That's usually a major expense on development like this. These will be part of the project, part of the capital investment that's being made. The low bid was four hundred and eleven thousand, but we're discussed accepting the bid of four hundred and twenty-three from Russ Basset. They're more expensive, but they are closer to meeting the requirements or the expectations of the dispatch center on consoles that are going to work properly. And after a discussion, it was determined that the executive director thinks she can pull the difference out from some adjustments and other furnishings you're buying for the building. So we'll be able to keep it on budget. There was also discussion about, the architect wants to know what we want on the plaque that'll be at the entrance. And there are so many different entities involved, we're just thinking of identifying the partner, partner governmental offices that are involved in the triple RDC and keeping names out of it. It would be a pretty tall plaque if we tried to get everybody's commission members in there. And other than that, that completes my report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, participated in Highway Tracking. It's been well-covered. Did talk with Justin yesterday, and Cassau twenty-six mill and overlay is scheduled to complete, be completed tomorrow, assuming no rain. They'll still have the, some work on the shoulders, but again, that project went well. On the sixth, I met with Quinn in regards to some issues at Social Services. Also just had some discussions about the PRTF. We heard from Mr. McDonald this morning, some of the channel challenges, challenging youth that they're handling there. And so again, Quinn talked about supporting this board's previous legislative priorities of having a PRTF. Met with Lori that afternoon in regards to some budget discussions, as we continue to evaluate and look for opportunities to cut there. Met with Justin in regards to some of the challenges that he's having with Enterprise in regards to leasing the vehicle, leasing some of the vehicles that they utilize. And so continuing to work through that. On the seventh, I met, had a meeting on detox. I think we've had a brief discussion about, in the new withdrawal management facility, the card readers are not the exact readers that we are looking for as spec. And so we're looking to come to a positive solution there. Met with probation, probation and their pre-budget meeting. I think they'll be coming here next week to provide their update. Commissioner Gross would be excited because we would actually, we're going to see our first decrease in a budget. And so that was good to see. Joe, that afternoon, I met with Joe, Sarah and I, and representatives from MCIT, and went through their planning and risk management. I would note again, just to highlight the work of our staff. I would note again, just to highlight the work of our staff, MCIT was impressed with the, with the risk management plan that was implemented this year, and actually took a, took a number of examples of documents from our plan to share with other counties as they go throughout the state. On the 8th, we met for the detox transition, also the DMV transition planning, again, that's been addressed. On the, on the 9th, participated with Matt Jacobson and Jason McCoy in the cannabis ordinance management. Again, I think Commissioner Krabonoff did a great job of highlighting, I think that here is another example of this board's actions in working not only within our, within our county, but also reaching out to the different cities that we work with. I think one of the things that was a big piece that came out of that is, is addressing, or making sure that our, our townships and our cities, we've reached out, you've reached out to the cities in our meetings, Jason McCoy has gone around to our cities, but I think that we, we talked about establishing a letter and also a template for if the, if the townships and the cities wish to have the county have oversight, that they, they provide that through their commissions or township boards. Yesterday, met with Darren, Anna, and also Tessa in regards to our, to a, the market study, more to come on that. Just a few different things, you have been invited to, the Morehead City Council is going to be having a public hearing on August 26th, 5:45 at the YMCOMs to discuss the border, border city enterprise zone, specifically the annual workman's compensation that, that Morehead businesses, 150 Morehead businesses receive, and looking at roughly $450,000 to, to help offset some of the differences between our borders. Just for our citizens, again, we're going to be on the August 21st and 22nd at the Government Center, the, we're going to be having seal coating done in the parking lot, so everybody's going to be asked to park on the West gravel area for the, for those two days. And then just a reminder that today's primary election from 7:00 AM to, to 8:00 PM at the Government Center, and then please, you can check our website for, for other polling places throughout the county. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We are now going to move into a closed session.
If, if I may, may I add?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, just real quick. One thing that came to my mind, I forgot this on the cannabis issue, is one of the things I'm wondering if we can consider as we move along in ordinances and working with cannabis coming legal, would also be the possibility for us in Clay County to move toward making flavored vaping illegal, and Morehead's already done so, I believe one other city has, I don't want to identify which one. And, you know, I've got people in the field of treatment and other places, and I think anything we can do to keep our younger folks, where most of the show, is shown on flavored vaping, I would, anyway, just throwing it out there, maybe we need to be having a conversation about this. So that vaping is fine, I mean, it's legal and everything, but I don't think we need to have flavored vaping involved, especially when it comes to high toxicity and THC cannabis. Just want to throw it out there.
Okay, we are going to move into a closed session. If I could have a motion before the county administrators' annual evaluation.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same, opposed, same sign. Okay, we're in closed session. And we're back in session.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. We were just able to meet in closed session to conduct the annual review of our county administrator, and certainly through the feedback and the comments there, we would argue that our administrator is, is likely the best in the region, if not the state of Minnesota, and we're so lucky to have his leadership and vision for, or to relay the vision of the county board to the programming and needs throughout the county. So, you know, I don't know if there's any other comments, but I would certainly make a motion after that, or, make a motion to approve the positive review of our county administrator and recommend the step.
I, I would second that with the notation that this is the, this is the year we're on your calendar where the step increase would happen, and also based on that, certainly support the step. And just a follow-up to, on my scoring of you, you exceed expectations in every category that we're asked to, you know, give a review on you on. So thank you for what you do for Clay County.
Have a motion to second, and I'm just going to make a comment, and I'll give Commissioner Krabonoff a second too. Absolutely stellar performance, we are lucky to have you, and continue to lead, we're grateful for that.
And again, I echo everything that the others are saying, and again, you're just not only a mentor to a lot of your staff, you're, you're a mentor to me, so, thank you.
A motion to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're, you're stuck with us for another year. All right, if there's no further business, I'll call to adjourn. We're adjourned.